Seven o'clock, we'll start city council. We plead rise of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hallie Lee, call the roll please.
Lanning.
President.
Pratt.
Here.
Jenkins. Ben Alsberg.
Here.
Ryan's.
Here.
Delroy. Hanson.
Here.
Can I have a motion to excuse asked members?
Make a motion to excuse the two asked members.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have the agenda before us. If there are no changes, can I have your motion to approve the agenda submitted?
Motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have our first audience participation. This is a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Nope, all right. With that, we will go on to council meeting minutes of February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Are there any changes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the minutes are adopted. All right, aye to chance group, you have counts payable. We have quite a substantial one because we did not have our meeting last time. It is large, we had the water main break we had to pay for, and then we did a bunch of tax payouts to schools, to NISA, and to...
Those are the biggest things.
And to the community colleges. And some tax refunds. However, as the chair, can I make a motion? So I would ask for a motion to be submitted to adopt both accounts payables.
I'll make a motion to pay accounts payable checks numbered seven-seven-three-eight-seven through four-four-two-one and ACH seven-seven-two-dash-seven-nine-six in the amount of six-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second.
All right, Hallie, can you call the roll please?
Lanning.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Ryan's.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
I would also make the motion to pay checks seven-seven-four-four-two-two, seven-dash-seven-seven-four-six-zero, and EFT eight-zero-nine, ACH seven-nine-seven-dash-eight-one-eight in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-and-thirty-four dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
All right, Hallie, can you call the roll please?
Lanning.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Ryan's.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
All right, now we're getting into our action items. We are now entering the fun time of budget season. So with that, the city manager has presented options for our budget work sessions and our public hearing. So you thought was included in your packet, are there any questions? Same deal we went through last time, do you have anything to add on that?
No, thank you to the chair. The only thing I'd add is that the work sessions are not required, the first two motions. The second set are required, and that's public hearings for the millage rates, utility rates, and then ultimately the public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year budget.
I'm assuming council, I have a chance group, do these dates, do these dates work for everybody? Excellent. All right, then I would ask for a motion to accept the dates as submitted.
I'll make a motion to set budget work sessions for April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four and May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. You can put your motion to me.
So the first one does not require a motion?
They both require a motion.
Yeah. I'll second that motion.
All right, Hallie, will you call the roll please?
Pratt.
Yes.
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Ryan's.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Lanning.
Yes. And the second motion?
Make a motion to set the following public hearings for May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four millage rates, twenty-twenty-two-twenty-five utility rates, twenty-twenty-four-twenty-five fiscal year budget, May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Support. All right, Hallie, can you call the roll please?
Pratt.
Yes.
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Ryan's.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Lanning.
Yes. All right, moving on. Our next action item is the Red Cedar Jubilee application and permit for sale and consumption of alcohol in Howard Dalstrum Park and liquor control commission resolution. City manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protown. So this is an annual item, it's actually two items. It's the permission for sale and consumption of alcohol in the park, which is required by charter for any sales in any of our parks. And then the second is the liquor control commission resolution. These are fairly standard, we've adopted this for many years as part of the event. So have to answer any questions yet?
Are there any questions? I know Councilman Ryan's is very active at Jubilees, or anything you'd like to say?
You know, we're plugging away, planning Jubilee. We've got fireworks coming up after this. We're very excited about that. We're booking some music for the beer tent. We've got, we have a new group that's working on filling the dunk tank, the schedule for the dunk tank, which is great. They started working on it Thursday, and I got a text on Friday saying they only had two slots left from Wednesday through all day Saturday with different groups.
Are you saying you got dunk people signed up?
Dunk people signed up. They're, so the way that worked, the deal with that is the Jubilee pays for the dunk tank, and then the different organizations get somebody to sit in there, and all the money that they make while that person sits in there goes to their organization. So we've got, we've got a lot of, I think the Food Bank, Kiwanis have different people in there. There's some different people from the PTSA, some surprise folks that I'll let, let the people that are organizing and announce, but we've got some stuff going on with that. Had a few conversations with Earl Wolf about trying to get some other things going. Check out our Facebook page, and as we get new stuff added in and ready to go, we announce it on there. That's Red Cedar Jubilee, our Facebook.
Will the city manager be able to friendly amendment or plus any of the PR done?
Answer him.
Aw, man.
I was gonna nominate you.
All right, Hallie, with that, would anyone like to make the motions? There's two of them, so they need separate.
I'll make a motion to approve the application and permit for sale and consumption of alcohol in Howard Dalstrum Memorial Park for the dates of June nineteenth through twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four.
Support. Hallie, will you call the roll please?
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Ryan's.
Yes.
Lanning.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor control commission resolution, application for special license for the Red Cedars Jubilee.
Second.
Hallie, will you call the roll please?
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Ryan's.
Yes.
Lanning.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
All right, our last action item is the Jubilee fireworks approval. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
The only thing I'd add is that NISA was contemplating some changes to their overall policy book, and fireworks was part of that. So we'll make sure that with the company and then city staff interfaces with NISA long before the event, so we don't have some, there's a little bit of a no pun intended fire drill last time. A lot of it had to do with the weather.
Yeah.
We'll make sure there's plenty of time to meet with them.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from council? Perfect, how, as for the motion?
Make a motion to approve the request from Red Cedar Jubilee for Great Lakes Fireworks LLC to have fireworks at Howard Dalstrum Park in Williamson on Friday, June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, as part of Red Cedar Jubilee with notification made to NISA.
Support. Hallie, will you call the roll please?
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Ryan's.
Yes.
Lanning.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
All right, with that, we are moving on to our discussion items. Is there any update on the road dad?
Yeah, so we, thank you to the chair. So we, we had a great attendance at our public meeting, joint public meeting with MDOT a couple of weeks ago. Probably more than fifty people were there, it was a lot of great dialogue, I thought. A lot of questions asked, not all questions answered, to be fully transparent. It was a little frustrating again on the MDOT side that there seems, always seems to be sort of this schism about the road diet equals turn signal or not. Because this is two meetings in a row now that we've heard that those might be mutually exclusive. So for my sake, I have some open-ended questions. As a follow-up, I did communicate with MDOT that, you know, what are the options for the city for to do this as a pilot project? And the pilot period would be two or three years, and frankly, that's not a pilot project. I mean, that's a full project and then a major change at the end if we were to implement. We talked about possibly shortening the overall road diet zone, because right now it's currently designed from Zimmer to Block Street. And while they weren't against that idea, they recommended not having the road diet just in the core, which kind of would defeat the purpose of making it smaller, because a road diet from McCormick to, or Zimmer to McCormick doesn't really, you know, meet our needs as far as improving safety at the intersection. So that's really the update. I mean, having to turn it over to the council members that were there, if they want to, you know, give their comments or share any thoughts with the rest of the room.
Yeah, please, whoever wants to introduce.
Yeah, the only kind of, maybe it comes to mind is they indicated at the meeting that we already have the left-hand turn, turns second, we need to have a right-hand turn lane. Is that accurate, if I?
I would say that's accurate on, yeah, on Putnam, yeah.
On Grand River?
There's already two lanes there, if you look at it that way. So, and it kind of begs the question of like, does this need more of a review at that intersection? Because there's already two lanes, and it's common to have, you know, a through lane of traffic and then a lane that's either or, that it's a left or a through.
That's what I was thinking, that's what I was thinking too.
Yeah, that's a fairly common thing.
But they seem to indicate that's not possible.
You'd have to turn that left lane into a left or through, right?
Correct. Yep.
Which simply, I think, would just be paint, that's not a green.
Yeah, and part of the driver is, I mean, if you look at this, that, and nobody, like, except sad people like me spend their time staring at traffic signals of different towns. But this is not a smart signal, because it's just there. And it's mechanically timed, it has to be changed. Most modern intersections have an ocular reader, you can see the camera up there, and it tells, it shows it, okay, if there's a queue up, it tells the signal to turn. And that's not new technology, I worked on a project like that twenty years ago. Not similar to this, but it was an intersection that would back up, and so we added an ocular reader. And in the middle of the night, when there's no traffic turning left or right, then it's just through traffic. It stays green until a car shows up in the queue. So those are things that, I know that, I don't, you know, all of you have been living with this concept, this project, a lot longer than me, I don't know that that's ever been looked at or as an option, just have the ocular reader. But MDOT's really sort of maybe delaying some of the major decisions on this till twenty-twenty-six, when they're planning a new signal.
And well?
So, one of the, one of the things for me, when we started talking about this in like twenty, well, when I first started hearing about, when I first got on council in twenty-eighteen, we were discussing Putnam and Grand River, and we wanted the left turn lane, right? That was the left turn lane, the green arrow, that was the driver for this, to try and get safer, try and get safer pedestrian crossings, crossings there. And we had discussed a little bit, some things, and when we would talk with MDOT, MDOT, all this road diet, road diet, road diet. That's what we're gonna, that's what you can get. Well, in the, in the public meeting a couple of weeks ago, they, it kind of really hammered home with MDOT, they finally admitted, not admitted, or they made it clear, we're getting a new signal in twenty-twenty-six. Whether we do this road diet or not, they're gonna give us a new signal, which is something they've never really, really stated previously to that. There were a lot of folks, the president of Beckham came and mentioned he has a lot of trucks that come out of Beckham on a daily basis, and he was concerned that his trucks would have a very difficult time making that turn. And MDOT has admitted, the entire time we're working on this, that a part of the road diet is congestion, is that there will be added congestion due to, you know, the narrowing of the lanes. But the president of Beckham goes, you know, that's gonna cause a serious change to our trucking traffic, and can our guys get on the road there? Can they take a, take a left? As they get on the highway in Weberville, he goes, we're always gonna take a left turn lane there, and it's difficult for us at times now with four lanes. If you take away that additional lane, and we had a citizen from Williamson Lakes and expressed issues with traffic all the way out to Williamson Lakes. And really, where we've been wanting to focus this project was Putnam and Grand River. And we're really affecting, and we knew we were affecting traffic all through town, but with the additional knowledge, in my opinion, that MDOT is going to give us a new signal in twenty-twenty-six, whether we do the road diet or not, we're on the schedule for a new signal. I'm wondering, and we, we weren't looking to change Beckham's truck traffic. That was not a goal of this project. Or a lot of the other things that have been discussed with that. I'm wondering if there are not things that we can't work on to address? You know, if we, if we were to find a way to put a turn lane on Putnam, would, between now and twenty-twenty-six, would that, would that new signal not have a green arrow? Because they kept saying at that meeting, well, we can't give you a signal because you don't have a turn lane. Well, okay, well, what if we don't do this road diet for two miles through town, but we do a turn lane on Putnam? Can we, and I don't know that it's that simple, but I think that's something we should be looking at to say, okay, if we do that, does that get us the green arrow and we're not messing up traffic for February day on Grand River the whole way through town? That was, I've been thinking about that a lot since we began.
Anything else, any additional comments? Perfect. All right, our next discussion item is construction projects. I know we started off some projects.
Yeah, we started right on time on Williamson Lloyd. We used the, our contractor, Iron Horse, used a pulverizer and took care of both of those streets, the first phase, and the next phase started today in earnest. Iron Horse mobilized, there's water main out on the street, right there. And they're putting in catch basins the next couple of days, and they'll start shifting towards a water main in Williams. Lloyd will probably look the way it is for a couple more weeks as they shift over, but it was just a smart thing to do with the equipment while it was mobilized. So that's going well. And just, just a reminder, North Putnam will start back up the week of April fifteenth. That's three weeks from today. So just a reminder, and we'll keep reminding folks through social media and do some noticing as well.
So for Putnam, when we start up again, obviously there'll still be a few more weeks of school left. Has the superintendent and yourself been coordinating that?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, as much notice as we can get out to the citizens to let they know to expect traffic at the school. With that, do we get any correspondence? Nope, all right. Department head reports?
I'm gonna give my time over to the police chief, because he has a couple of cool things to talk about.
Yeah, the, so, well, the first thing is, with me tonight, as you've all met, Officer Ryan, or Triane Cawkins in the back, but the newest officer that's with us is Officer Ryan Coach, that's in the front row. Ryan started full-time with us about three weeks ago. He's currently assigned to night shift. I work with Ryan at the In County Sheriff's Office, and we, we had a good prospective candidate, and I'm glad he's with us. So if Ryan wants to say a few words about where he came from, or, he's a lifelong Williams resident, so.
I graduated Williamson in ninety-three. Went to work for the county, did twenty-five years out there in approaching retirement. I thought, what better place to start back up again, I guess, than where I started? So here I am, happy to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to have you.
The police report speaks for itself, the statistics for February of twenty-twenty-four. That was all sent out in your packet. For the department highlights, we put another reserve officer on, Brandon Nepp, who's active in the community, has kids that go to school here in Williamson. He's an excellent candidate, I'm glad we got Brandon on as a reserve police officer. We have three more applicants in the process to be a reserve officer. They're in the raw and long stage. So we're working our numbers back up for the reserve corps as well. The officers continue to stop by basketball, wrestling games, youth basketball games. So you'll see me there all the time, having popcorn and a drink. The, I, on a monthly basis, I complete a state form, it's a monthly use of force report form, that is made available to the public through the FOIA process. So it's, we've always done it, but I've included the monthly report. Now it's just, it's something that we do to be transparent. And the no left turn Highland Riverside started on February fifth, twenty-four. I've been up there, the day shift officers have been up there, we've given numerous warnings. The people, usually, most of the people that we stopped were, quite frankly, unaware that it was there. A lot of people from, maybe grandparents, grandpas, you know, that are dropping kids off that weren't aware of it. So we have been taking that as an education basis with the warnings, but those are coming to a close soon. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor Protown. Any questions of myself?
Any comments, questions or comments?
I would just say that the left turn lane had, the blocking of the left turn has been great. The crossing guard did a phenomenal job as always. But without that turning left, traffic has been a lot quicker rolling through there. So that was a great suggestion, and it seems to be working, so.
And for what it's worth, I think these numbers, I'm an engineer, I'm a numbers guy. I'm glad to have these numbers, it tells me that you guys are doing a good job. There's objective evidence, numbers that say you're doing a good job, so.
I appreciate that, most of the numbers come from the officers and not me, so they're the ones doing a great job.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and then we have the building department report that's in our packet. Was there anything you wanted to add to?
No, I mean, people, people did some work over the winter months, I mean, it's usually a slower time, but, you know, these will start picking up as people start pulling, you know, additions and death threats and defense purposes.
All right, committee and subcommittee reports, I know that we had a slew of them last week, so anyone wanna speak?
I'll start. So we had a zoning board of appeals meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was for variance in the Williamson Road Overlay District. Part of the zoning out there is a requirement for a rear cross connection between the businesses on Putnam. So like tractor supply would have to connect with the businesses next to it, but the connection is not in the front, it's actually to the rear of the buildings. Dollar General was looking for a variance to not require that, and honestly, with the, with the close proximity of residential neighborhood to the rear, it just made sense to grant that variance that, because it very much seemed like it was going to end up being a truck drive with the setup over there, and keeping the trucks as far away from the residential neighborhood as possible was, seemed beneficial to the entire area. We did add a recommendation that Planning Commission, when reviewing the screening requirement to the rear for that site plan, pay particular attention to that if possible. But that was ZB.
Awesome, thank you. Anyone else?
Parks and Rec, there was, we had a meeting, and we talked about the idea that the, the park up by the school, that we would divide it into phases, and we would get approval for the first phase, because there's a, I think it's a Department of Natural Resources grant, that we can apply for it if we have approval from the city council for the new, for doing it in phases rather than in one chunk. But I thought there was gonna be a proposal for the council tonight, but I guess not.
No, not tonight.
It's what?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. But yeah, the idea that we would then take, that we would build this in pieces rather than all at once, it's a good idea, because you can find little bits of funding here, little bits of funding there, rather than getting, wanting the full one-point-two million dollars, and they say, well, twenty-twenty-eight, we'll consider it.
Yeah.
You know, so we'll do it in phases, and that'll be good.
So this is to write updates to the park, or is it to write updates to the park, or what is the funding for?
Oh, the funding would provide, it would provide for the bridge, and then the trail that goes from the bridge going up to the school, right? So just that trail right there, and there's some variation on how much the grant might be. So it could actually go from the bridge then out to Grand River as well.
Oh, cool. They would possibly pave it though, is that?
And pave that, yeah. So that would be asphalt six feet wide or something like that, rather than, yeah. So it'd be wonderful to get the whole thing done all at the same time, but that's not too much.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be the current gravel trail that comes from the footbridge up? That would be, that'd be phase one of, because you mentioned the breaking this up into three phases.
Some number of phases.
Some number of phases, but phase one would be like paving that current gravel, gravel trail that goes behind the baseball field, over by the footbridge, all that.
Not behind the base, well, next to the baseball field.
Next to the baseball field.
And that's a gravel and mud trail. And the idea of getting that paved all the way out to Grand River, that'd be a really cool thing.
Yeah.
The, the chance of getting that to get funded is increased by the fact that it's providing foot traffic to the school, because it gives you a high mark and so forth. And so the chances are good that it will get funded.
Awesome.
Yeah. So Park and Rec, we did the fun stuff.
Well, we had a NISA meeting, which is always fun as well, and we had a few things on the agenda to talk about, one of which was just kind of, you know, NISA came to the board and said, I told you last month we had invested a pretty large sum of money into both M-Class and the CD, and the question was posed, can we take that money out without board approval? That was discussed and decided that it's a tiered approval system, depending on the amount. More or less, they need board approval to take out any substantial amount to bring back into the general fund. The more exciting things were, that we had the discussion that NISA wants to purchase a boat, which the boat would have benefits in the area of the Red Cedar River specifically, with kayak traffic and that sort of thing. They already have a boat, but it has a lower load capacity, lower horsepower motor, so they want to replace it. The question was posed, I mean, in my eleven years there, we never used the boat once. So it was, you know, do we see that big of a need for an increase? We don't know. The price of the boat seemed relatively fair for what it was, but is it gonna be used? That's the question, so that'll be back up next month. And then the other one was a side-by-side that they want to purchase, which would also be somewhat beneficial to the, would be beneficial to the community in ways of like the park systems, if they had to get back there for a rescue situation or a brush fire or something like that. We used to have the Jeep that kind of did those things, which is no more. In theory, it's a great idea, the price was substantially higher than what we thought it would be. It was sixty-five thousand dollars for the side-by-side.
What's the side by side?
It's like a...
I mean, people were really intense golfing gator.
Yeah, really intense.
It's a really intense golf cart.
It's a four, this was.
That I can go off roads.
Okay, so four-wheel drive.
Yeah, yeah, and this would carry some water, and it would do some things that were pretty cool. I think it would be beneficial, not sixty-five thousand dollars. So we talked about that, they're gonna kind of go back to the drawing board on that. I mean, it had some, some cool features, but like, you know, thirteen thousand dollars worth of lights on it, which is cool, but maybe we can subtract a little bit, get it more manageable. That'll be back next month too. And the only other big announcement was they, for probably close to, if not two years, they've been rewriting all the standard operating procedures and guidelines for NISA, like we've mentioned earlier regarding fireworks. And so that is supposed to be, I guess, pretty much wrapped up and done, and we're gonna get a presentation on that at the next meeting. So we'll kind of, it's a large, I mean, it's a bible, so we'll, you know, have to spend some time digging through it, but the silver lining is it was all overseen by Lexible, which is kind of a nationwide reputable company for writing stuff like that, so it should be pretty cut and dry and standard. And that was NISA.
Anything else?
With the, with the side-by-side purchase, I know during the budget process that was discussed when NISA was going through their budget in December, and there was discussion of possibly looking for a grant for that, was any of that discussed?
I asked if they had sought out any grants for that. The short answer is that the grants were looked into, but the general consensus was that most of the time those grants are offered to more impoverished departments than ours. Ours is pretty well off, not, not really in need of too much grant money, so.
Gotcha.
That comes into play, I doubt we'll get a grant on it. It'd be a beneficial piece of machinery, but it's also a lot of money.
Just quick updates, Mr. Gankis isn't here, he's our Tifa- Just quick updates, Mr. Gankis is here, he's our TIPA rep. We did have a TIPA meeting last week, we talked about, uh, the, the 24-25 budget from TIPA perspective, and then also improvements in the elevator street corridor, particularly the red barn by the railroad tracks. I mean, it's a barn in name only, it's, you know, it's kind of a convertible barn, too, so. So we're gonna either have to spend some funds on that to rehab it a little bit. But part of the longer-term plan, there was this big expansion that was planned, and we talked that it's not really necessary anymore. But the possibility of adding like an additional, there's a, like a five, um, bay, uh, cold storage building now, um, and that, that might be within the realm of, of TIPA, so we, we talked about those projects. And then also last week, um, it's not a direct city meeting, but, um, there was a lot of folks there that, from the city. We had a, an events, um, planning and promotion meeting, and we, and we were there with all the service clubs and Jubilee, Kiwanis, Rotary, Times Two, um, I'm sure I'm missing a lot, but it was good, it was a good meeting. We talked about how we can all help each other promote events and promote Williamson, we talked about the branding campaign. We also had a DDA meeting last week, and again, we talked about a lot of the same stuff, we talked about budget. So ZB?
Anyone else?
I did also hear, remember the Deets Bridge is getting fixed finally, or?
I heard that as well.
Yeah.
That would be kinda cool.
Just, just underscore that that is not in the city.
That's not it, but a lot of people in the city care about that.
Oh, 100%, I care about that too, but, yeah.
Alright, uh, with that, uh, we'll move into our final audience participation, maximum five minutes for a presentation, would anyone like to speak?
Okay, I will. Okay.
Can you come up here?
No, I'm not going up front.
Can you just say your name, please, thank you.
I'm Sonia Allen, and I'm, Steve probably remembers me because I'm the one from Williamson Lakes. I am not a public speaker, and as most non-public speakers do, one does not think or speak coherently when standing in front of a crowd. Hence, I would like to read a few of the comments so as to give a more cohesive statement. And a lot of this is from our meeting, what, a couple weeks ago? And I see, uh, Mr. Rhines and the, um, city manager have addressed a lot of these issues and stuff, but I'll still read it since they wrote it, okay? Alright, it says, "In taking our petition, we had a petition that we took around for a few days to people that are opposed to, um, the road diet." And, um, and Tammy knew about this because she's the one that suggested that we could do that. And, and I was amazed and disturbed that almost everyone I talked to had no idea what city council and MDOT are trying to push through with regard to the road diet. Even some of our businesses didn't know what the road diet entailed. What was most disturbing was the number of businesses which are opposed to this project and have spoken before you at council meetings. Some of those individuals or representatives of those businesses who have spoken before city council include Ron Wright, a longstanding barber in our community, attorney David Jones, James Bells of Bell's Party Time, Amanda Hart of Central Pharmacy, Jeff and Robin Codat of True Value Hardware, along with the president of Beckham. Even our fire chief is opposed to the road diet, stating that our fire trucks would not be able to negotiate the turn at the light. Now, that could be a real prop safety problem, which we're concerned about safety for someone whose house or business is on fire. Other businesses which are opposed to the road diet include, but are not limited, limited to, David Porter of Fireworks Glass, Leslie Harrigan of Legends Jewelry, Janet Stumpf of Aurora's Classic Thrift, Joshua Locke of Nikos, Nikos Tavernina, and Bob Babard of Babard Automotive Services. These businesses or representatives of these businesses believe the road diet makes no sense and would greatly hurt their business. This is especially true when council and MDOT are planning on removing the parking spaces on the west side of Putman Street. Some businesses said that if this project goes through, their business would be leaving our community. Is this what city council wants? Is this what our residents want? One council member said this project has been in the making since 2019. So why has council not been more diligent in actually informing Williamson residents of this intended change, either by way of getting pamphlets out to the community or actually walking around the community and talking to the residents and explaining what council had in the works with MDOT? Over the past five years, why have they not put it on the ballot for the community to vote on? This decision isn't one of just putting up a light pole or decorating the street corners. It is a major project which affects all Williamson residents, businesses, and visitors coming to Williamson. Council and MDOT, along with taking away the city parking spots on the west side of Putman Street, are taking away two car lanes, yet making two bike lanes. However, don't we use car lanes 12 months of the year, whereas bike lanes are probably used at most seven months of the year? As Williamson is a growing community with more vehicles on the road, why are we taking away traffic lanes? Council and MDOT say for safety, yet that is not a proven fact, and road rage may be more of a safety problem in the future if the road diet project goes through. By losing a lane in each direction, not only will this create backups in all directions, it will contribute to more difficulties in parking with individuals having to stop for school buses, delivery and utility vehicles, and to say the least, no more lining up in front of the Dairy Queen as there will be no lane to grow around those vehicles lined up to get ice cream. Also, don't forget the extra trucks and cars coming off I-96 every time there is an accident out there, and the traffic has to be routed through Williamson, thus, thus adding to the congestion in all lanes. Most significantly, the turn lane. Along with that, don't forget the slow-moving vehicles such as farm trucks or tractors and those individuals who drive way below the speed limit contributing to more road rage. Think of it, basically, there will be nowhere to pass between Foliville and Cornell Road in Oakmuss. In closing, council is not appropriately informing the residents of Williamson as to what they are trying to push through with regard to the road diet. Since we don't have the enterprise paper anymore, which used to keep the human, community semi-informed of what council was doing, council's members need to either get out and possibly walk the community, informing the residents just what council is doing, either by talking or handing out pamphlets to their constituents or finding some other way other than Facebook and council's website to get the, just a minute, I changed page. Get the community informed. Remember, not everyone is of the younger generation, me to speak. Transparency is a must, and since the council members are elected by the residents of Williamson, it should be their responsibility to keep the residents informed on topics of such magnitude as the road diet. For the road diet is going to significantly affect the residents of Williamson, our businesses, and those visitors who come to our town. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Anyone else like to speak?
Jim, Jim Carr, 225 South Putnam. I've spoken a few times, and I just wanted to, uh, reiterate, uh, our family's opposition to the dollar stores coming into town. Hope that it's a very transparent process, that people have the ability to speak up on, uh, whether we agree with them or not. Um, and, and council and the planning commission does listen to the concerns that we have. The 2015 Williamson Master Plan, I think is a brilliant document. No offense, but, seriously, it does lay out what the vision is and the goals and objectives. And, and in my opinion, and many others' opinions, those types of stores don't fit into that vision. So I want to, uh, reiterate that. Couple other things, if I could. I'm for whatever slows down traffic through our town. The road diet is iffy in my opinion. But being able to walk around and cross, have designated crossing lanes, have signs up that say, "It's a state requirement to stop for people in the, uh, in, in crossing lanes," I think is important. Police guys, I love the blue lights out in front of our house pulling people over, so people take good work. I also have one more, and it's a question, I know this isn't a question-answer period, but if you can answer this. You heard the discussion about the road diet, what's next? If, if you can answer that, what, what happens next?
Uh, I mean, it's not a question-answer period, but, um, you know, I think that we had the, uh, public forum, uh, last time to have interaction, and then I think there's still questions pending for MDOT on some of the things that were raised. Um, so we're waiting to get answers from them on, you know, uh, you know, trucks' traffic, um, you know, tractor traffic, things that Council and Rhines brought up, so I think we're waiting to hear from them to get final answers.
Will, will it stay on the agenda? I mean, so that we can see it?
I mean, until it's finished, yeah.
Put on the agenda for 22 months, so not go anywhere.
Well, it's, it's actually in the old plan too.
Yeah.
It's in the 2015 plan, so.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Since it's been approved, it could be, someone could move to have it reconsidered, is that correct?
Well, we, we adopted a resolution in support of the concept, but the final plan was never approved.
Oh, was, okay, so that's, they're still involved?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, so nothing has been finalized yet.
Thank you.
Yep, well, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, please, uh, say your name and address, please.
Michelle Sweet, I live right over here on Cedar Street. I just, I know that there's a problem with the speed. And I drive home Grand River every single night from work, and people are speeding. So one of the solutions I think about is moving the speed limit out. So where you have 25 right in front of DNW, move that out where it's 35 miles an hour. We did this out here in Putman. So that's one solution. And then enforce the speed limit. I don't ever, I don't ever see anybody sitting on Grand River pulling people over. So there's different areas that they, the police can sit and pull these people over. I stood out here tonight, trying to cross the street, telling people, "Slow down." They weren't doing 25, they were going a lot faster than that. Um, then another solution is no more turning right on red. Put a sign up, that's gonna save your, your pedestrians than not having the accidents at the four corners. If you put, if you want, you want to stop people from getting hurt, you put three lanes, a bike path, and parallel parking, someone's gonna get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Katie Conley, I live on High Street. I kinda wanna piggyback on something Sonia was saying, um, about communication. I know that you guys are doing your best to get communication out to the community. The problem, I think, with social media is that everybody has an algorithm, and those algorithms are whatever you're looking at most of the time. So there have been times where I've seen stuff for the city of Williamson not until a week after something has already happened. So I don't think that it's good to rely solely on that. I know our options are limited, but, I mean, I think even a small one-page, like, front and back newsletter-type mailer situation, just to kind of apprise the community about things that are going on, since we have lost our main source of information for a while now, would be extremely beneficial.
Uh, anyone else? Alright, uh, with that, we'll move on to council moment comments, I'll start at the left.
I have a few things. First, since, uh, since our permit for fireworks passed, I didn't wanna bring it up earlier, I wanna thank, uh, Codat's True Value for sponsoring those this year, I wanna make sure they go through. They, they stepped up and did that, that's, that's the only way Jubilee can, uh, can afford to do fireworks, that's it. That's a big push, it's a big, uh, it's one of the more expensive things we do, and that's it, that's a huge thing, so thank you to Codat's for that. With, we, we hear a lot about communication, and we try very hard, in my opinion, to communicate. One of the first things we did after I got on council, um, we have, we have all of our, all of our council meetings that are videograft, and when I first got on council, they were only available if you had WOW Public Access. And then if you had Dish Network, if you didn't have anything other than WOW, they were never available. Since around 2019, they've been available on YouTube or still on those public access channels. Every city council meeting, you can get on there and watch them. All of our agendas are posted outside, we have our multiple city Facebook pages. We, in comparison to a lot, in comparison to a lot of municipalities, we are way more transparent than a, a lot of places. Can we, can we do better? I'm sure there's ways that we can do better, um, and it's not that we're not open to that, but it, we, we do the, we do the best we can, um, with, with communications. I believe there's a, there's a city email, um, email list, you can get on to have agendas and all those sort of things emailed to you. So then the agenda is being sent straight to, for all city meetings, straight to your email in basket for TIPA meetings, DDA meetings, city council meetings, those are all things that you can get. We just moved from having, I think it was last year, we had an agenda item where we had all the postage. We're trying to get people to go to having, uh, having their, their water bills emailed to them to try and save on the postage, because it's an amount of postage we have been, not that we can't email, it, I, it's not that we don't mail anything. I just received a mailer, and I think everyone around the Williams, Love, Wind, McCormick neighborhood over there all received a mailer for road construction. I'm sure Putnam, it was the same thing, so it's not that we don't do mailers, but to do a mailer on, on a regular basis, it's not like there isn't a cost to that.
It'd be very expensive per post stand for every resident.
You know, we, we, we try very hard to, to be as open, honest, and, and forthright with our communication as we can get. And like I said, I, there are, there's always room for improvement, but we, we're, we're doing the best we can. And if you look at a lot of the municipalities in the area, you're not gonna find their meetings where you can, you can pull them up on your local cable or on the internet, and they pay to do that on a regular basis.
So, uh, New Orleans addressed the dollar, their dollar store proliferation. In 2019, they passed a, a regulation that said that you can't build another dollar store within a mile of a dollar store that's already there. Other towns have done the same thing, uh, with different variations of distance. If that came before me, I would vote for it, um, if this came before this council. Whether it's too late for that to happen, in reference to what's going on now, I don't know, but there's that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up was the safety at the four corners. Whether we have a road diet or not, the safety at the four corners is an issue. And, um, there's ways, I think what has to happen there is that, as drivers approach that, they need to have something that's saying to them, "Hey, there's more going on here than you're driving through." One thing that's really noticeable is that the lines are faded, where, you know, the lines are just fading off. Should never be lines fading off there, there should always be bright, more bright something. There's also ways to indicate that people are crossing the street. Grand Rapids, there's a, um, place where there's actually blinks, when they, they act, cross the street and it blinks. I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna do that. Well, my premise is that something needs to happen there so that when drivers approach, they, they get the feeling that, hey, I need to be careful. So I got it.
Perfect, uh, I have no comment, period.
Two things about communication. It's, it's a sad thing that the enterprise is no longer operational, but I think they're no longer operational because they couldn't make any money doing it. If you can find a way to make money and do the side, the two-sided thing every month, you know, I think that'd be a great idea. I just don't think you can make any money doing it, and I don't know that we wanna raise our taxes to do that, so, electronic communication is how things are gonna happen. I think, we have a new website, don't we? Yeah, the, the city's website has just been re, revamped, and I, last time I was there, it looked pretty slick, it was well-done, it didn't look old, it wasn't clunky, and there's a lot of information there. So, uh, it, it's easy to pick up the enterprise on your front porch and open it up like that, but it's also easy to go to your computer and go to the, the Williamson City website. So communication is, is, it's as good as it's gonna get. That's number one. Number two, on pedestrian safety, we have statistics on police stops and tickets and stuff like that. We have some statistics about the number of people who've been injured at the four-way stop down here. What we don't have a statistic of is we don't have the number of people that have almost been injured, like you. If your kid stroll, for crying out loud, you know? There's no way to establish those kinds of statistics, but I think if we had that, I mean, there's no way to say for sure, but if we had that, I think that would, that would highlight the fact that this is a dangerous intersection. So much so that the police chiefs, I don't know about Chief Wees, but Weiss, but before that, the police chiefs have said, "Don't cross at the intersection, J-Walk, it's safer." So, and we don't have any statistics that back that up, you know? So, and we don't have any statistics that back that up, you know? Um, but that, that's gotta be a, a primary concern there. I understand businesses need traffic, we need to have parking, stuff like that, but if you have lots of traffic and lots of parking, and you get people, had, that have close calls at the intersection, that's gotta be prioritized, okay? That's all I can say.
Um, I might sound like a little bit of a broken record, but I'm gonna say it anyways, so, um, as far as communication goes, it's pretty cut and dry. We use the city's website, we are on YouTube at every meeting, where we have a, a city Facebook page, and the reason you don't see a lot of us chiming in on social media is because we've all made the mistake of doing it once or twice, and then one derogatory statement leads to the next thing, and all of a sudden it turns into this giant, you know, we just don't do it. So, all the information is there, it's not so much about our lack of communication, it's just people don't necessarily know where to go to find it. So, we, uh, try to inform people through the meetings, through public gatherings, through any source we can, if, if you wanna know what's going on in the city, come live, come sit in seats, or, you know, get on YouTube, or get on the city's Facebook page, or the city's website, it's all there. And that's just the way it's probably gonna stay. Um, but as far as the road diet goes, um, our number one concern, like they said all along, has been pedestrian safety, and if I'm being honest about the whole matter, is that I live on Grand River, in the affected area of the road diet. So from the get-go, I'm like, "Hell no," because I can't get out of my driveway as it is right now, especially at 5 o'clock, and I gotta go into town, turn around, and come back. So, every now and then we get these, you know, accusations that we have some agenda, we're trying to push things through behind the scenes, or I promise you, every one of us is up here, just within the best interest of the city. And so when we sit and listen to presentations from MDOT, and we watch, you know, different things about, here's what we can do that'll improve pedestrian safety, I was on the fire department for 11 years, went on numerous calls at that intersection, and people getting ran over on bikes, walking, nobody died, but a matter of time, you run enough people over, someone's gonna die. So, that's been our objective the whole time, is public safety. And so, I just want everybody to know that we don't have any hidden agenda, we don't have any cahoots with anybody, we're just looking at the presentation that's given to us and saying, "Man, we might be able to save some of our fellow citizens' lives if we do this." And that's what drove this whole thing, and the information's been out for two years, every single meeting, YouTube, Facebook page, website, so we're doing the best we can, sitting in these seats. We're, um, now starting to gather some new information that we didn't have before, which is good, it's gonna spawn some more discussion, hopefully in a couple weeks we'll have an update from MDOT on some new things, or some answers to some questions we didn't know previously, but, um, you know, we're just up here doing the best we can. All right, excellent. With that, uh, there's no further business, so I will call the meeting adjourned at 7:52.
Adjourned to the call.